Becky, are you ready?
Yes.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 a.m. I will call the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting to order for Monday, January 27, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. A few reminders. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss agenda items currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of parties involved. We will be following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will adjourn. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act. We will begin our morning with prayer. Commissioner Brunz, if you please.
Join me if you would. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you grateful for all the blessings that you bestow upon us and the community that we live in. Lord, we ask that you just give us a touch of your wisdom and discernment and your grace as we meet together this morning discussing important issues and working our hardest to try to carry out the responsibilities entrusted to us. Lord, may our actions and our decisions be pleasing in your eye. Lord, we ask for continued protection for many individuals that choose to live a life in service to our community, putting themselves in harm's way to protect the many freedoms and the way of life that we enjoy from our first responders, our law enforcement personnel, and our military personnel, serving here locally and those that are serving in far-off shores. Keep them safe, Lord. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I would like to welcome our county attorney, Rebecca Harling, to our meeting this morning, sitting in for our usual deputy county attorney, Tyler Volkmer. We'll try to take it easy on you this morning.
Okay.
With that, moving on to item two, approval of the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held last week on January 21, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the Commissioner meeting held January 21, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? I do have one on the committees. Commissioner Brunz still had the personnel committee on his list. We had taken him off of that one and added that to Commissioner Woodruff's committees. Other than that, no other corrections.
You spoke before I could.
Very good. I don't, I, in everyone's defense, here's what my chicken scratches look like for the meeting minutes, so I understand the confusion. They only made sense to me.
The health report, that wasn't changed?
No, you're looking at last year's. So if you turn one more page, you'll see the...
I didn't see that card. I needed to.
Yeah. It's on there. So there's the updated ones. You want a second to look at it?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Very good. Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Epstein.
Brunz.
Aye.
Uller. We will now consider the claims and treasurers receipts.
Make a motion to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Our next item is adoption of Resolution Number 2025-2, appointing the county depositories for 2025.
It would be my motion to adopt the Resolution Number 2025-02, appointing county depositories for 2025 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's quite a few pages that lists all of the financial institutions that we use. Are there any questions or discussion?
My only question would be are there any other, or any new financial institutions that we have not currently had, or any that were removed, just for clarification's sake?
We would have to ask Sheri. Do we want to give her a call and ask her?
I would like to. It doesn't appear that there are, but it was a year, year ago.
They all looked familiar, yeah. They all looked familiar to me.
They are all the same as last year with the exception of Pinnacle Bank. Pinnacle Bank was on there last year because Alex had thought she might open an account. She never did, so Sheri did not do anything with that one since she did not have an account there.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Our next item is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Madam Chair, I would move that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $2,515.55.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Thank you. Bye. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems. Aye. Brunz.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Our next item is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Madam Chair, I would move that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $2,515.55.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Our next item is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Our next item is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Next is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning, Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning.
I should just have one this morning. It's personal property return that was filed in 2024 with assets, and then we received a letter later showing and stating that the access, or excuse me, assets were actually disposed of in December of 2023. So it's a taxless correction, removing that value on those assets for this particular personal property schedule.
Very good. This is for Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation, and the property was disposed of 12/15 of 2023.
Make a motion to approve the pre- write-in motion.
Yep.
Certificate of Correctional Honor submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor. You just claimed you want me to move it?
Yeah, thank you.
Confuse you, but payroll's still coming, but claim all. This will be the last payroll.
Okay.
Will he apply to be a superintendent?
Yeah. Yeah, when we interviewed Jason, who was one of my top picks. Interesting, I did not know that.
I could easily see him moving up ranks.
Oh, yeah.
I received some pretty negative comments about fee reduction.
He didn't.
So he didn't have as many hours there for the while.
Always great when things go up.
Yeah. Sticker shop, we started it way too long.
There's a cost to go.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the door. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting from January 21, 2025.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the minutes from January 21, 2025, as the county board of equalization meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems.
Epstein.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Next is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning, Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. Good morning. I should just have one this morning. It's personal property return that was filed in 2024 with assets, and then we received a letter later showing and stating that the access, or excuse me, assets were actually disposed of in December of 2023. So it's a taxless correction, removing that value on those assets for this particular personal property schedule.
Very good. This is for Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation, and the property was disposed of 12/15 of 2023.
Make a motion to approve the pre- write-in motion.
Yep.
Certificate of Correctional Honor submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor. You just mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
If there is nothing else to come before the Board of Equalization, we will adjourn at 9:17 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Becky, can I have all the payrolls? Looks like it's signed once and then your name on it.
Your tipper just will be hanging out.
Yeah, I knew that.
Bless you. Our agenda item is discuss and consider ratification of the veteran service officer's hours and wages that went into effect on 9/16 of 2024. Becky, I'm going to let you speak to this a little.
Okay. When we set salaries or wages last week for the veteran service officer, I, on our sheet that we had, our spreadsheet, you guys had set the salary in January of 2024, but during budget time, you allowed him to go from 35 to 40 hours per week. So thus, the salary increased. So that is just basically ratifying from September 16th to January. He had had an increase in pay due to hours.
So that, that change happened when we were doing our budget conversation, and Veteran Service Officer Gann came in. We had discussion about increasing his hours from 35 hours a week up to 40. We did approve that. This is just a housekeeping measure because the document was not signed by the chair at the time. So that's what that agenda was about.
Chair, one moment, I would move to ratify the veteran service officer's new salary to reflect the move from 35 hours a week to 40.
Does that need to be retroactive, then, Becky?
He's already getting it.
Correct.
He was already getting paid that amount from 9/16 through when you set the salary for, the new salary for January, but...
So we do need to note effective 9/16 of '24?
Yes, because he's already received, been received.
Put that in motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Is there a form for me to sign today, then?
No. There was a payroll change notice that was done in September.
Very good. Thank you. The next item, discuss and consider changing Noxious Weed Superintendent and Veteran Service Officer back to salary from hourly wages to be effective 2/16 of 2025.
I can address this, too, if you want me to.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to guess, time flies, probably over 10 years ago, our former deputy county attorney felt there was a change in wage and hour law that did not allow our deputy county officials or majority of our department heads to be classified as basically exempt employees that could be on salary. So at that time, all our deputies and most of our department heads were changed to an hourly rate. Since then, in the last year or so, I think it was Tyler, the wage and hour classification things had changed somewhat, the laws had changed, and he felt, after he did some research for me, that our deputy officials and probably our department heads at your discretion could be switched back to salary. So the deputies actually went back to salary in November of 2024. But some of your, Brandon had been salary already because that had been singled out and approved. Jason was salary, so Veteran Service Officer and Todd, the weed superintendent, are the only two positions that were still left at an hourly rate.
And this, this topic came to light after our discussion last week when we did the salary increases. After the meeting, Tyler and Becky and I had conversation, and Tyler was going to address this today and speak to it, so, but Becky's in the know, and like she said, I did have conversations with both Veteran Service Officer Tom Gann and the Department of Noxious Weed Superintendent Todd Brandon, and they were aware of the change that was going to happen today. So based on the research that Deputy County Attorney Tyler Volkmer had done, this was a move that had already been made with some of our deputies in all the different elected offices, and he felt like it was prudent that we, for the sake of consistency and doing it the same for all departments, that we make this change today.
It would be my motion to change the Noxious Weed Superintendent and Veteran Service Officer back to salary effective 2/16 of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I feel like we've had some good explanation. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Referring Becky's comments about the switchback 30-plus, like eight years ago, it was salary. So it's been, it was salary for quite some time.
It had always been salary for this timeframe in there where the previous deputy county attorney felt that would be prudent, but from an administration standpoint, it's much easier, I think, for these officials to, sometimes you're going to work more than 40 hours a week, your slower seasons, you might work a little less, so it's just a better way to, you know, have that time and not worry so much about overtime.
I wonder if it would be appropriate to talk about the former rancher amendment or not, at $80 to $100 hours a week, or is that something?
Should we put in a minimum of 70, then, for these people?
I'm sorry, Joe, I did not hear you. What did you say?
Probably a good thing.
I'm going to kick you, Mela.
Talking about the former rancher amendment that puts in 80 to 100 hours a week under salary, and he thought maybe that wouldn't be a good idea at this time.
So the question I would have, our deputies in the various offices, granted they're working for elected officials, but they've been moved to salary.
Yes, back to salary.
We have a department head, like, for instance, the Rose Department, it's one of our largest departments in the county, it's an appointed position. Is his deputy highway superintendent salary or hourly?
I would think he could be salary. He's salary, yeah.
He's salary. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have continuity across the board.
Yeah, I believe these would be the last two.
Some of the confusion comes from wage and hour law because in the private sector, for example, a company I was affiliated with for 27 years had to split hairs with, you had to supervise somebody to be on salary. And so...
easier, I think, for these officials to, sometimes you're gonna work more than 40 hours a week, your slower seasons, you might work a little less, so it's just a better way to, you know, have that time and not worry so much about overtime.
I wonder if it would be appropriate to talk about the former rancher amendment or not, at $80 to $100 hours a week, or is that something?
Should we put in a minimum of 70 then for these people?
I'm sorry, Joe, I did not hear you. What did you say?
Probably a good thing.
I'm gonna kick you, Michelle.
Yeah, talking about the former rancher amendment that puts in 80 to 100 hours a week under salary, and he thought maybe that wouldn't be a good idea at this time.
So the question I would have, our deputies in the various offices, granted they're working for elected officials, but they've been moved to salary.
Yes, back to salary.
We have a, we have a department head, like for instance, the Rhodes Department, it's one of our largest departments in the county, it's an appointed position. Is his deputy highway superintendent salary or hourly?
I would think he could be salary. He's salary, yeah.
He's salary. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have continuity across the board.
Yeah, I believe these would be the last two.
Wage and hour law, because in the private sector, for example, a company I was affiliated with for 27 years, had to split hairs with, you had to supervise somebody to be on salary. And so they, they had a lot of branch managers and assistant managers and things like that. They wanted the salary, and some agronomists, for example, and originators, but they couldn't do it because of the wage and hour law, so they had split hairs. So essentially, that's where a lot of this confusion comes from, the federal wage and hour laws.
No, I completely understand that, I'm just wanting to make sure that nobody else is...
We're on the same page with everybody else.
I think these should be the last two.
And that was, I believe, part of the conversation that we had last week was that these were probably the last two in the county that had not transitioned back.
So I just wanted to get that clarification, that we're not gonna have other stragglers coming up, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
This appears to be it for Clarence.
Shocking.
Yeah.
So Tammy, I'll have you do a payroll change notice to them, put them back to salary.
Okay.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is discuss and consider setting February 24th, 25th. Senator, it feels like we just did this a few months ago.
It comes pretty quick, doesn't it?
It really does. I look forward to having some conversation with you ahead of time to see where we're at with that.
I know you checked a lot of the items off of that list last year. Yep, we did. Yeah, I'll be getting with Rhodes Commissioners and scheduling a time when we can review all that and go through it, so.
Very good, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Do you have any idea when that might be available, we can take a look at it?
Um, a rough draft.
Let me put it this way, when it is, would you shoot me a copy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure if anybody gets a copy.
Go ahead.
You kicking that old school bit, I think, Newton.
Nice.
I hope good thing you didn't... Hopefully, okay.
It is 9:35. Our next agenda item is discuss and consider the North Sally Port Door repairs at the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Good, it's a good thing you came up there, Sheriff, because I'm feeling pretty ornery today.
Uh-oh.
So he's gonna need somebody coming in the back there.
We got you, Booker. If you would like to introduce yourselves.
Booker Boyer, Director of Building and Grounds.
Yeah, hit that mic for the sheriff.
Sheriff Jerome Kramer.
Turn on the mic, Paul.
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I give you guys an incident report and a bid from Weathercraft. On 1/15, we had an incident over at the Sally Port. The jail of a deputy from another county tried leaving the Sally Port while the door was going down and hit the door. What this entails, that quite a bit of damage to the door. I talked to the building heads and Becky and Jerome and Dan, and Danny and I all been in the loop, got ahold of Tanner, and Tanner said, "Get bids." And Tanner is like, "Well, just get door up, that's what we do." But as you guys know, we can't do it like that. Here, we gotta get bids and do it right. So I tried SMF doors, and he came over, looked at, measured, never responded back to the bid, and I've tried Weathercraft, and this is what they gave me. It's somewhat of a security issue, having a door that's not operating.
It was absolutely a security issue, and this should have been ordered. It didn't have to go to bids, I'm not very happy about it. We should have a door on order. We have a $1,500 deductible that we need to pay, so I'm not really concerned with the door cost. We need to get a door there. We had an ambulance stuck in there the other day, had to back out. We've had a 65-passenger bus in there that, I don't even know if they ever got in, let alone trying to get the thing back out of there. This is, it needs to be done, it needs to be done now. No more than it's gonna cost the county, I don't know why we're sweating over it, needs to be done. Shouldn't be behind us by now.
Yeah, I think the state statute allows us for emergency-type situations to be able to do this.
It's repairs, it doesn't have to be bid anyway.
Well, and it's gonna, it's gonna get subrogated anyway, so.
You can't buy one of these doors down at Menards, it's a specialty door, it's a security door, and it's...
Hopefully, regardless of what happens, my question is, why would the county have any liability? I'm not saying we shouldn't get it fixed, I'm not saying that. We can get it fixed and try to subrogate. My point is, did the county do this? Okay, you go into somebody else's property and do something wrong to their property, and you damage it, you're liable.
And they have the same insurance we have, so it's a watch.
Our, our insurance will take care of this, and they'll go after the other policy for...
But the deal is, we will have to cut a check for this, and our insurance will reimburse us. And that's where the problem lies, and that's why I had to come in front of you guys today.
And Booker was in communication with Tyler Volkmer?
This is what Tyler asked me for me to do.
This is his recommendation that this procedure be followed to cover all the bases. So that's why we are having this conversation today, so...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point that we needed to have it come before this board for a determination, but I agree with the sheriff and the fact that we don't need to wait and set a date for bids or anything of that nature. This is an emergency-type situation, and I do believe that state statute allows us to be able to do that. When we had an emergency situation with Rhodes just this last year.
Correct.
That we took expedited action to get it done because state statute allowed us to do that.
That would be in your motion then?
So it would be my motion that we accept the proposal from Weathercraft Companies in the amount of...
Are we using that door opener again?
Yes, we're using the door opener again.
Of 22.
Is that the whole thing, Booker? I thought I saw a bigger number.
There's a door closer that was an option, Ken.
Yep, that's pertinent to security, isn't it?
Well, but the opener is still usable.
It's still usable.
Well, we can program it over.
Yes.
Sorry, program.
So the total amount needed, Booker, is what?
That'd be the 22,900.
The $22,940?
Yes.
And then what's this additional, $3,970?
That's...
That's the opener.
Which we don't...
We don't move that.
I thought that was labor.
Labor's down here at the $3,900.
That's labor.
So it'd be the 22,900 plus the labor.
The 39,700.
Okay.
I like that number.
So it's the $22,940 plus the 39,700.
Yes.
Yes.
What about the $3,485, is that for the...
That's optional for the opener, but the opener's fine.
We don't need that.
No.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question though, but it says installed is 22,940, okay? So down here, somebody said labor, fringe material and labor, so if this was labor, I thought it's already, labor's already, the way it's worded up above, it says installed.
That's a great question.
Don't you have to give 39,70 upfront?
I think that's your down payment.
Before they start the business of putting it in?
I think we're still...
We're south of 22,940.
So the 39, excuse me, 39,70 is included in the 22?
Yes.
Oh, so not an addition.
Okay, so 20...
Yeah, I think that'd be the way to...
I think so, too long.
You can amend your motion though. I'll leave my second.
Can I amend my motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I would make my motion, given the emergency situation and the need for security at our Lincoln County detention facility, to accept the proposal from Weathercraft Companies for a North Sally Door repairs at the detention center in the amount of $22,940 with the down payment of $3,970, and that our insurance company take appropriate steps to find the appropriate liability and have it build, the rest of it built at that point as appropriate, and authorize appropriate signatures. That would be my motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I would like to say that I feel like this is an opportunity for maybe our Rules Committee to get together with our insurance agent and our deputy county attorney and work out something that, moving forward, when we have emergency situations, that we don't have to wait for a meeting and for this conversation to happen around this stage.
And as part of that, have the county attorneys and officers involved.
I agree. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, there's a lot of gray.
Yes, but there doesn't need to be. We can address this and have it cleared up moving forward.
Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome. Roll call, please. Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley. Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
That's good.
Thank you, guys.
And hopefully, it's all back order till next January.
Hey, Booker.
Three to eight weeks. Might be.
Just clarifying before you hand it over to him, will you? You know what I mean? I know you will, but...
Our next agenda item, discuss and consider a radio grant for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
I'm just glad that we're not Lincoln County.
Captain Dan from Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Captain Newton.
Good morning. Yourself signed in. In that little karma fate, several months ago, I was contacted by Eric Seacrest with Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation, trying to get me to spend his money. Said they had money for state radios, and I was like, "We're good." And I kinda sent him out to the volunteer fire departments and said, "They always can need the help." Well, last month, we had one of our portable radios go down, and we got a bank of six that we bought in 2016 that go onto the state radio system, and they truly do anything you want to from your belt. We sent it off to Kearney, they sent it to Dallas, they sent it to another repair shop. Both of them come back, said it's unreparable, unserviceable, no parts available.
It's a Motorola?
Oh, yeah. This is the game we play. So now we have a nice-looking paperweight, and I called Mr. Seacrest back and said, "Hey," and he's like, "Grant applications closed January 15th," so I smoked it out online real quick, submitted it. They would review it and give us anywhere from $500 to $50,000 for portables. So I shocked for the moon, we'll see what they do, but we have a line item for radio repairs, so right now, I'm not asking for a penny. For a penny, for the Lord.
The caveat was right now.
I'm just keeping you in the loop that I was contacted about grant, and I jumped on it before the deadline date, and just trying to do something. The frustrating thing is, when we bought these portables in 2016, they were just over $5,400, now they're just over $10,000. So that's, and as soon as the model comes out, we used to joke about the model number was how much it was gonna cost, well, they're outdoing themselves now, but...
You know, I appreciate all the good work, Captain Dan, but you know, you're up the top. There's only one other place to go.
top. There's only one other place to go and that's the sheriff, so other than a pat on the back on a good job, that a boy.
I just do what I'm told.
Good job, that a boy.
Do what I'm told.
Captain Newton, I love that Eric reached out to you, trying to get you to apply for this grant money. That's awesome, that he sees the need in our community.
I'm still gonna blame him because he started it.
Yes, he did.
He jinxed you.
He did.
I think, I think Commissioner Weems and I might be having supper with Mr. Seacrest tomorrow night as part of our Sand Hills RC&amp;D board meeting, so we'll be sure and pass on the appreciation.
We use that foundation for our rifle sites. They're phenomenal. They work, it's very easy and they do a lot of good.
You don't hear the word "easy" and "grant" used in the same paragraph too often.
It's not too often. They call you and wanna send you money, so.
Exactly.
The source of the dollars, I understand that Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation is working as the intermediary in the parent house and doing all the administrative stuff, but what's the source of the dollars?
From the community.
So it's.
And they will, they will go out and advertise that, hey, we sent so many dollars to the sheriff's office and we live in an awesome community.
Yes, we do.
Very, very heavily supported by our, the people we serve and it's because we treat them right. They treat us good. It's, it's a mutual relationship.
We had another organization request a letter of support from us for their grant application through Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation. Is it too late for us to submit a letter of support for your?
I would have to call and ask him.
Okay, why don't you do that? Because I would gladly sign off on a letter of support for this.
Appreciate that.
Very good. On a, on a side note to this, just so you know, there are two pieces of legislation before our senators this year that would provide funding for radios and communication. Looks like, without really digging into it, two bills that are almost identical. One is for $19 million and the other one is for like $5 million. Tailored mostly towards volunteer fire departments, but looks like it could also encompass radios for roads and the sheriff's department for communicating when they're, when you're all responding, so that might be another opportunity.
Would definitely look into that. It's just a revolving door. You get a new piece of equipment and five, eight years later, they won't work on it.
Very good. I didn't pass that the rest of the way around, but there's his application.
I mean, it's throwaway society.
It is.
Throwaway TVs and microwaves.
Very good.
Do we add, do we need an official motion to?
I don't believe so.
Retroactively?
It's just an FBI.
Yep.
Okay, good.
The application's already been submitted. I believe they, they said the announcement would come out late March.
I believe so.
Yeah, so keep us posted. Let us know. Very good.
You want this back?
No, sir.
I'll sell it to you?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Very good. Our 9:45 item is just a legislative update. I attended the NACO, my first NACO board meeting last week and on day two of that meeting, we had our legislative committee meeting, as you all probably sign up and receive the legislative newsletter that Beth Farrell puts out. It's very informative. If you don't get that, please sign up for it. But just a couple of items. By the time we met, I wanna say between 350 and 400 bills had been dropped. I think by the time I made it home, they had had a couple of more days of legislation and a total of 715 legislative bills with 18 constitutional amendments had been introduced. Some of the stuff that I wanna review here today are things that directly affect the county. Todd Herndon and myself have had long conversations. Todd and all of the weed superintendents have, their departments really felt a huge effect of losing the funding that we had for county vegetation management when the egg bills were killed. How many years ago did that happen, Todd?
Um, that they stopped the grant?
Yes.
Just last year that they stopped the grant money.
Yeah, and so your department had less to operate with and the weed superintendents were very proactive advocating for that funding to come back. So Senator Ibock did introduce LB 145, which returns the grant funding to the Noxious Weed Department for Vegetation Management, and that is to be provided through the Director of Agriculture. The hearing for that is tomorrow. So I feel like something that NACO has always promoted, but really drove home this time, is that hearing from the county, so from the Noxious Weed Superintendents, from residents that benefit from that program and from the commissioners around this table, does have a really big impact. So I went in and typed up a letter and sent it to all of the Western Nebraska and some of the senators from Central Nebraska that I know. And then we also have an opportunity to submit comments through the, the hearing webpage, so I would encourage all of us to do that. A couple of other big ticket items, of course, is inheritance tax. There is LB 468 that addresses that and also LR 13 CA, which would be a constitutional amendment. And right now, for the constitutional amendment, NACO is recommending conditional support as long as all the details in that proposal hold together. LR 16 CA and LR 18 CA are bills that address unfunded mandates. They, right now, NACO is really supporting those and it looks like that there has been some really good conversations happening there. And basically what that says is moving forward, legislation cannot impose increasing programs or services unless the political subdivisions responsible for that is fully reimbursed through a specific appropriation by the legislature. And for veterans, which always gets my attention after the veterans on the bill last year, there are two bills, LB 272 and LB 425, that addresses having homestead exemptions for veterans that is equal to their disability rating. So please be watching. I will send out some updates. Commissioner Woodruff, I'll be sending an email to you and Lisa Burke. There's two items on there that have the potential of affecting the visitors bureau in a not, not very positive manner, in my opinion. So other than that, just read your updates. John Cannon sent out a very informative email last night, so does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
I have a question for Todd. Todd, that funding from the state, that's typically was used for waterway controls, right? You know, that was always cost prohibitive because you needed to use aircrafts, specifically helicopters, so my question to you, if you haven't had a discussion with the State Association, your counterparts in Region 6 and beyond, would be, in order to maximize the funding value, have you discussed maybe co-opting on a drone program?
Um, they're starting to.
Looking at that? Because as you probably already know, you can do that for a fraction. That's, that's where, that's where production agriculture has gone already.
Todd, would you like to come up? Thank you.
Hope people watching.
Yeah.
Todd Herndon, weed superintendent. Yeah, they are starting to work with drones. They're just, helicopters are more efficient right now. You can get more acres covered in a way smaller time with a helicopter. But pretty soon you'll get to the point where the drones will be able to carry a lot more. The kind of restriction now is, the heavier they are, the more requirements the pilots have to follow.
Right.
So, but they have started. They were doing some bridges last, last fall for us with the drones, so.
Well, without a doubt, the people that are in that business, aerial application that have the helicopters probably are privy to all that technology with the drones as well, so perhaps they'll just need some encouragement to go that direction for the counties.
Yeah.
Another thing that Todd and his board advocates for with the, especially with the waterway spraying and the helicopters, is that instead of always starting in Eastern Nebraska and working their way west, it seems like they always run out of funding before they reach us, so.
More time.
Yep, so Todd's done a great job in advocating for them to, to start here and work their way west. How has that conversation been going?
They still work their way upstream. I mean, when you spray, you gotta spray going upstream.
Upstream.
But yeah, and I don't know if they could get some future point, get two. They've talked about two helicopters coming in and tag teaming it, so.
Very good. So that's, that's pretty much, there was a lot of conversation. There's gonna be a lot going on in our legislature this session, but that's just a couple of things that I thought worth addressing here today.
And I think with that bill, they just changed the, changed from, from May to shall, so that way it's not under the director's obligation to pay it out. It requires it.
Requires it, yes. It's amazing what difference one word can make when it comes as Rebecca well knows, so very good. Rebecca, do we have a need for a closed session today?
Not to my knowledge.
Very good.
One other bill that, let me back up just a little bit, that was included in John's email, was LB 384, which talked about the pink postcard meetings.
Yes.
Where if somebody evidently wants to require the attendance of a majority of the governing board of any political subdivision required to participate. So that a majority of our board would need to be there.
They'd have to publish a meeting notice.
Yes.
And majority of the school boards. I wonder what thought process was involved in putting that bill together. Just wanted to put more onus on anybody that was asking for a raise in their levy?
Well, some of those people have never served on a county board and don't understand that you gotta pay the bills, so.
I just thought that was kind of ironic. Hopefully that meets.
They're trying to belittle you, quite frankly, in my opinion, and insinuate that you're a drunken sailor with your public funds and that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Without realizing that what they're asking for is gonna cost the taxpayers more.
If you don't think that we don't take the heat directly for spending public funds, then they're sadly mistaken.
Yeah, that whole.
We're right here, front and center, year round.
Yeah, that whole deal is just a farce. But anyway, I thought, I thought that was kind of interesting that that was back and front.
That was one of the recommendations from the board and the recommendations from NACO's attorneys was to not just oppose it, but to oppose it aggressively and with passion. So NACO is putting together a counterproposal concerning pink postcards that is, I've showed it to Julie Stinger and she's with support it wholly, so we'll see where all that goes. There's, it's gonna be a lot to watch this year, but as always, John really wants us to get the message out that our voice and our involvement does make a difference when it comes to these bills and how they're handled on the floor. So we will move on to hear concerns from elected officials and department heads or their representatives. Do we have anything else? Sheriff Kramer, I do have an email that I will send to you on some stuff that will affect jails. And then Neil had things that he wanted added, that he asked for us to share, so I'll shoot you an email with all that information. All right, is there anything else for the good of the county?